January 31st school board meeting to order. Tonight, the lead of our president of allegiance will be two young ladies that won our amazing shake contest.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of God and God in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Join the board in a moment of silence. All right, next we'll do, we have the approval of the agenda. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Young. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion, gurus. Approval of the consent agenda.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank y'all. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, next please spotlight on education, Mr. Bertlow.
All right, spotlight on education, we've got our two winners of our amazing shake. And I'd like to, Ms. Haley, if you'd bring them forward.
Good evening. We have Veronica Babbitt here tonight and Madeline Heaton. They are our first winners, our very first Rutherford County amazing shake competition. And they will be representing Rutherford County in February at the National Amazing Shake in Atlanta, Georgia. They have truly impressed me. We were lucky enough and fortunate enough that the Chamber of Commerce, Beth Duffield, came to us, recognizing the importance of soft skills and instilling those in our children at a young age, which is what we're doing in the, in the schools. And they partnered with us for this competition. And I'm gonna let them talk to you. And you're gonna be blown away. Here we go.
You go first Veronica.
Hi, and good, good afternoon. Um, my name's Veronica Babbitt and I am one of the top two finalists of the amazing shake. And I am from fifth grade, I am 11, and I am from Kitchell Elementary School. And...
Can you tell them what you think amazing shake has done for you in this competition? Speak to that a minute.
It shaped me as a new person, I think. It's amazing to learn all these different skills among the way of doing this and being able to learn all these different skills and being able to have people criticize me and tell me what I need to work on in that certain way. And just, it's blown me away of what I get to work on in the future. And now that I get to go to Ron Clark Academy. It's amazing.
Okay, thank you. Madeline, will you speak to him, please?
Hi, I'm Madeline Heaton. I go to Walter Hill Elementary. I am 11 years old and I am in the fifth grade. And so, like Veronica said, this competition has shaped me in so many different ways because I feel that this could help me in just a resume for applying for a job and helping me communicate with other people in the world. And you know, I think it's helped me with my soft skills and interacting with other people of my age and older.
Do I have any questions for Neil?
Because they will answer them. Thank you. We're excited and we appreciate your support in all you do. We think this is very important. It's important to, you know, we're about empowering our students. And what better way to empower our students than teach them how to look someone in the eye, to shake a hand, and to have good conversational skills. And we're starting that at a young age and we're proud of them. And we wish them luck.
I don't know, you reckon they wanna be a principal? All right, recognition.
All right, what we'd like to do today is we'd like to recognize our Rutherford County's school resource officers. This is the 25th year anniversary. Uh, I've had the opportunity, when they came in, the very first, uh, I think Sheriff Truman Jones there brought them in and created a program. And I'll be honest with you, my experience with the, these individuals has been nothing but first class. But we're gonna let Captain Harrison talk to us.
Good afternoon. Twenty-five years ago, Sheriff Truman Jones, sitting here, was behind me, proposed that we bring law enforcement officers into the schools. There was a lot of skeptical people about the idea that...
As a matter of fact, I'm gonna get out of the schools. Well, with the cooperation of the school board, county, and the schools that we did it, we started off with a thing. We started off with five, five officers. The idea was that they would be there for safety and security, but they would teach, they would counsel, and it would be a role model. We're the first division within the entire state. And I actually was the first one within the entire southeast region. That's our other dedicated group. They may give the school 12, 16 hours a day. They do, they have story events, dances. They support clubs. They can start some of their own clubs. Some of our educational clubs are health, math, and reading. Just a bit of a pleasure to be a part of it. And we've grown since that time. From five officers, we have an officer in there, at least one officer in this school. A couple of years ago, due to budget constraints discussed about taking the officers out of the schools based on, and the parents just went wild about that. And it was funny to see the transition from 25 years ago to being skeptical about putting this in there, to the parents considering the power of this. But our success wouldn't be possible without the school board and the support, county mayor, the county commissioners. We just wanted to be here to help celebrate this 25-year anniversary with you and a thank you for your support because without your teamwork, this would never have happened. So, with that being said, Mr. Bertlow, if you would come up here. Sheriff Truman Jones, please step up here. Sheriff Mike, if you. Mayor Katrin. And Butch Baum. Butch Baum is one of our original five schools. I want to recognize your roles. What we've done is commemorate this because we developed a challenge point for the 25-year anniversary of the division. And we wanted to present each one of these with one of the challenge points to represent that anniversary. We also have something that the school board needs to do, so the chairman, I should present to you.
One of the things right there is that I, I think it's a tremendous program and a partnership that's been formed between the school system, Rutherford County school system, school board, and of course, the Rutherford County Sheriff's Office. Uh, it's a strong program that I think it took a vision back in 93 and probably started a little bit before 93, that Sheriff Jones was able to bring forth and, and bring that vision to fruition. The point of what we've got today, I think we've got a great program. It's a program that other school systems across the state, and not only across the state, but in other cities and counties and states, look at what program we've got. Uh, I want to say thank you to the school board for allowing us in the schools. I look forward many, many, many more years of continued partnership.
Sheriff? Would you like to say something?
No, you know, it's just like anything else. Everybody here, uh, a lot of times, people get too much credit for things that are done because the people that are on the front line, they're the ones that really make this. And, and we're just so blessed to have the people that we have had in this community. And, uh, I, I was always amazed at watching them during those days as they went into the schools and how much they were loved by the kids and how they were accepted and the communication that they were able to develop. Uh, not only with the kids, the teachers, the principals, uh, it was just, everybody was involved. And it just shows you what can happen when a community really pulls together on something. And it's hard to believe that there were a few problems in the school system, as everybody knows, back then because kind of the pecking order was changing a little bit. And, uh, I'll, I'll mention one thing and, uh, and Bill knows exactly what I'm talking about. Uh, Oakland had a problem, uh, in very early part of the SRO program. And we had an officer in there by the name of Bill Kennedy. Big, huge guy. And he was put in there for a particular reason. Fight broke out in the cla, in the hallway. Kids just went crazy as he went in the hallway because there's a great fight going on. And it's like watching, uh, you know, one on television. And all of a sudden, they made a mistake of hitting Bill while they were fighting. And two arms went up in the air and he had students, big kids, up against the wall. And you could hear the "Ooh." All of a sudden, there was no kids in the cla, in the hallway anymore. They were out there. Uh, but, uh, you know, we were, we were blessed, Bill. We really were. Everybody was in the right place at the right time. And, uh, I've talked too much already, but I, I just wanna thank all the people and especially the officers that have gone in there and become part of the schools. And, uh, so many times, they make a mistake by just putting officers in, in, in the schools without proper training. And they, they really didn't have, a lot of them did not have the ability to communicate with the kids the way they should have. And, uh, I wanna thank you for so much for recognizing these guys. They're, because they're the ones that made it happen.
Thank you. As Chairman, members of the committee, let me, uh, just kinda echo what Sheriff Jones said. Uh, I was on the county commission probably my second or third year in 1993 and he approached the public safety committee. And he said, "I got this idea and I wanna congratulate him on having that vision that many years back." And he took a few of us. He said, "We're gonna do a road trip." I was always up for a road trip. And, uh, so we took off for Florida. Remember, Truman?
Orlando.
Orlando, visited a school program down there that had the SRO program. Buddy... Buddy Royston, our, our chaplain at Sheriff's Department, was driving one of the old Broncos. We got about halfway to Huntsville and he threw a rod, uh, in his car. So we had to make other arrangements and pick it up on the way back. But, uh, it was a, a successful trip. We came back, presented to the county commission at that time. And we got resistance, believe it or not, from the school board at that time, some members, not all. We got resistance from parents. We got resistance from, from the teachers. Uh, but, uh, it was the best decision at the time because we never thought of it. We didn't have active shooters back then. We just wanted to take, um, officers and put them into our school systems where our students could learn to respect the authorities that we had. And, um, and I think the proof is in the pudding that not only was it the first in the state of Tennessee, it still continues to be the best in the state of Tennessee. So I'm very proud of our SRO.
I was fortunately one of the first principals that had, Bill West and I were the, I guess, the first duo. He was a school resource officer. The way we used to do business back then, we didn't have any rules. There wasn't even book to go by. So if a kid got in trouble or did something, we'd go in my office, shut the door, Bill and I would just write something up. And so that's where our rules first started with. But it's, it's probably the best decision Rutherford County had ever made because it's like, uh, Mayor Katrin said, "We don't have active shooters." But we had a lot of potential shooters that had the weapons and, and it was amazing. And, you know, they've run drug dogs through Oakland and everybody was clean. Amazing enough, but I was the only school. Everybody else is sort of afraid to do it. But that's the type of thing that the SROs could bring about, that the kids felt safe. Uh, from a principal standpoint, I really felt safe because some of the parents, if they come in and cuss me, uh, Bill would just have walked through the door. And Bill's a pretty good-sized guy. And, uh, sort of made, when they saw the gun and saw him, that sort of opened the door for them to go home. So, thank y'all.
We do, let me, if I can, just quickly, very quickly. I've had the opportunity to work with them for 25 years. Um, I can't say that any SRO that has been in our school did not contribute to the success of our school. Um, a lot of things that they've said here is true. Uh, I wanna thank the commission, I wanna thank the board, I wanna thank our parents. You, uh, when we have, when they send a SRO in our schools, rest assured, they're well-trained. They work well with our kids and our teachers. So we, I can't say enough great things about them.
I had the honor of working with the first SRO at Oakland. And they absolutely changed the culture of the school. It was absolutely wonderful to have them. And we appreciate them and are extremely glad they're still there. All right, uh, got a couple more here to recognize.
Absolutely. All right, we're gonna recognize the Rutherford County. We'd like to recognize Andrea Kane, named school nurse of the year, and Barb Harrell, named school nurse supervisor of the year by the Tennessee Association of School Nurses. You guys would come forward? Ms. Winter?
Good evening, I'm Sarah Winters. I'm the health services supervisor and I could not be more pleased to introduce the duo that the school nurses from across the state chose as the representatives of exemplary school nursing this year. Barb Harrell is a clinical nurse supervisor for the district and Andrea Kane is at Christiana Elementary School. They've both got years of experience and it, and just have a profound impact on the students of Rutherford County. They have wonderful vision, um, and, and just put the students first. And, and we, we absolutely are ecstatic that they're both of all the, all the stu, the school nurses across the state. These folks were elected by their peers to, to represent the Tennessee Association of School Nurses. So, bravo.
Thank y'all. Congratulations. All right, visitors have two tonight. Firstly, Mr. Michael Grossman. Mr. Grossman, thank you for being here. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you very much for your time. Uh, my name is Michael Gossman. I'm a parent of a student at Laverne High School. I'm here to speak with you about salutatorian and valedictorian requirements. An unprecedented event happened last week on Monday. The number one class-ranked student at Laverne High School with a unblemished 4.00 GPA, who has already taken 12 college classes, approaching the credit hours of an associate's degree, was denied candidacy for valedictorian and salutatorian. Given the existing requirements, I looked into these and spoke with the state, had the state take a look at the Rutherford County policies. And it's in their opinion that there may be some unintended consequences. I'd like to identify an issue for you and propose a reasonable solution. First, recognize in the material I provided with you, to you, there is two requirements to be a candidate. Number one, you have to be considered distinct according to state criteria. Minimum 3.0 GPA and some other things. Could be academic merit, uh, award that's given by the state or national level. Could be a music award, athletic award. Or you could take 12 credit hours worth of classes in college dual enrollment. Uh, second thing is honors, academic honors. Well, the require, the requirement for that is ACT-based only. Uh, you have to meet the benchmarks in each of the four subcategories. If you don't meet those benchmarks, you are declared not getting graduation with honors. So you don't advance for a candidacy for valedictorian and salutatorian. In this particular situation, the student was two points less in one of those categories. The problem is, there's a hypothetical situation where a student can have Bs their entire career in high school and wind up getting this benchmark, taking four credit hours in college, and be a candidate for valedictorian. That student might end up with a class rank of 100 and beat out the number one class-ranked student for valedictorian. Now, as a potential solution, I'd like to first identify that we need to be really careful with ACT benchmarks. An AC benchmark, ACT benchmark is designed to provide an analysis of a student as a metric, what their likelihood is, is to achieve a B or a better in college and do very good. Uh, it's really unapplicable to a student that's already in college taking these classes. So as a solution, if we include also the traditional requirements for graduation with honors across the nation in college, cum laude, magna cum laude, summa cum laude, as an additional means to attain valedictorian and salutatorian candidacy, the problem is dissolved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next we have, uh, Mr. Aaron Holiday.
Good evening, Board. Aaron Holiday, 2034 Abingdon Drive in Laverne, Tennessee. It is not my intent this evening to derail the will of the board or to change what I predict will be a decision this evening to install a synthetic turf field at Oakland High School. Um, it is my intent to point out the lack of equity in the approval of that field. Um, at present, there is a lack of equity for the current facilities at Laverne and Smyrna High Schools. This has been pointed out by the board on several occasions in relation to the visitor seating as well as the concession areas at those fields. It's been the responsibility of this board to raise that and this board has done that for more than 11 years. It's been the failure of the county commission to fund those improvements and this board is creatively finding ways to, uh, make those improvements in spite of that. I feel that the board should not support a provision that would exasperate this differentiation of opportunity for the students of all Rutherford County citizens. The proposal comes before the board for many reasons and those include: the approval of the destruction of the current field that taxpayers have provided for students; the acceptance of a promise that a non-governmental entity will pay for the new field; the endorsement of commercial advertisements on public property; the consideration of the impact of Title IX male-female equity; and the consideration of the impact of equity of opportunity for each student in Rutherford County. The 11 years of evidence that the county commission has shown us that they will not support a differentiation in community support or corporate partnerships in our schools where facilities have been provided by booster clubs, by support groups, and by private donation shows us evidence that there is not a reasonable expectation that these turf fields will exist in every school. Somewhere in the future, this board may choose to fund a school for a turf field. And when that occurs, at least we will have said in a voice of dissent that the private donation that is occurring at this point may not seem fair 10 years from now or, or longer when this board says, "We've gotta push past this" and taxpayers are going to fund the last field or the last two fields. It's for these reasons that I rise as a voice of dissent. As I watched the work session on Tuesday, I didn't hear that voice of dissent, a voice that said, "This may not be an equitable solution. It may be good for this particular high school, but it may not be equitable." Uh, so I rose to bring that voice.
All right, next is the Greenheart Exchange. How are you?
I'm good. Good evening, my name is Melanie Fogg and I'm with Greenheart Exchange, a nonprofit cultural exchange agency placed in Chicago. We've been around for over 30 years. I live in Murfreesboro and I've been placing exchange students here for about seven years. I have with me today, who I would like to recognize, four of my wonderful exchange students from our area high schools. Um, and they are attending the full school year, 10 months. And they're with some wonderful host families. Uh, first, I have Annalisa Conchi from Italy. Uh, she is 17. She is at Blackman High School and participates in the swim team for her high school. Matilda Quintana is also from Italy. She attends Oakland High School. She was the team manager for the Lady Patriot soccer team this fall. And Dominika Palesska is from Poland. She also attends Blackman and is also a integral part of their swim team. Cassandra Fondos is from Moldova in Eastern Europe. She is 16 and is an active volunteer in her school, Smyrna High School. She is a United States Department of State Scholarship student in the FLEX program, which is the Future Leader, Future Leaders Exchange. Um, the FLEX program came about in, uh, I believe it was 1992, shortly after the fall of the Soviet Union. The FLEX students come from countries which formerly made up the Soviet Union. They are recruited and selected as the top students in their country. Uh, they go through a rigorous selection process before they're awarded these scholarships to participate in a high school exchange year here. FLEX, and yes, another scholarship program we place students for. They arrive eager to learn more about American ideals and, and values. They are required to volunteer in their community, as all of our Greenheart Exchange students are, and attend, and attend activities that teach civic responsibility. They hope to serve as effective ambassadors and to bring down stereotypical barriers in communities across the United States. They return home to their home countries with positive ideas about the United States and share those experiences with their peers. So, I think it's very important that we have these students in our schools because many of our students here may never even get the opportunity to travel outside of this region, let alone internationally. And so, having them interact with these students positively is giving them a way to open their eyes and, and their eyes to the, to the world and, and really give them a, a global perspective. So I appreciate the fact that we are allowed to have exchange students in your schools. Uh, just a little bit more about Greenheart. Um, as I said, we require all of our exchange students to be active volunteers in their community and these four... community, and these four ladies have taken full advantage of that. They have volunteered many hours in our area. We at Greenheart are committed to cultivating leaders from all over the world, and our organization has many other programs to offer, such as outbound programs for our own students who want to do high school abroad, volunteer abroad, short-term program, language excursion camps abroad. We do school-to-school, short-term exchange programs. We do work and teach abroad programs, volunteer abroad programs, and even a new program which brings international teachers to our high schools to teach for anywhere from one to three years. So if you'd like to learn more about our programs, you can visit our website, greenheartexchange.org, or you can talk to me. I'm going to leave some of my cards and information somewhere by the door when you leave, and you're welcome to call me. And if you, obviously, if you are interested in hosting a student, talk to me, because that's my biggest challenge, is to find these wonderful volunteer host families that take these kids in. It's a wonderful opportunity for their family. So thank you for your time, and thank you for allowing these wonderful students in your schools. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Do you have a waiting list? Do you often have a waiting list to come here?
A waiting list for international participants? Well, we place about a thousand students nationwide with our organization, and we end up placing them all, but I don't know if our partners would like to send us more in camp. I don't know. That's a question that I really can't answer.
How many are in the state of Tennessee?
Just with our agency, probably twenty, but there are other agencies that do what we do.
Anyone else?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, summer school calendar.
2019 summer school calendar, you can find on tab two. The Instruction Department is requesting approval for the 2019 summer school calendar. Plans are for high school course offerings. The high school site will be Riverdale High School. High school first semester course offerings will be from May 30th through June the 25th, 2019, while the second semester will be scheduled from June the 26th through July the 23rd, 2019. Transportation services is not provided. Tuition will remain at $100 per half-credit hour for high school courses and $200 for driver's education. Recommend approved motion to approve the Instruction Department's request for the summer school sites, and the calendar is presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hodge, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Propose? Motion carries. Approval of community use of facilities.
Pursuant to Board Policy 3.206, public education schools and institutions, post-secondary education institutions, private universities and colleges, governmental entities or agencies that provide benefits to the Rutherford County school system or have an in-kind relationship approved by the Director of Schools may request the Board of Education to allow the exemption from the use of facilities fee, which the Board may allow or deny based upon the details of specific requests. Recommend approved motion to approve the following groups requesting fee waivers for the use of facilities pursuant to Policy 3.206. Cub Scout Packs 374, St. Thomas Health Medical Mission, Cub Scout Pack 341 for Pinewood Derby and Blue &amp; Gold Banquet, Middle Tennessee Vocal Association, the City of Laverne. All other requests for the use of facilities are approved, but fees for these will not be waived. Recommend motion to approve. Please.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan, second.
Second.
Ms. Sharp, thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose? Motion carries. Okay, facilities.
All right, facilities on tab three, Rock Springs Middle School. Principal Stephen Wayne has requested to purchase a 10-by-12 wooden storage building to be placed on the existing concrete slab. Engineering Construction has reviewed the request and the placement location and finds it acceptable. This request is at no cost to the Board. Recommend approved motion to approve Rock Springs Middle purchase of a 10-by-12 storage building as presented.
Motion to... Thank you, Ms. Hodge, second.
Second.
Ms. Young, thank you. Questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Motion carries. Blackman Middle School.
Blackman Middle School. Principal Amy Conifey-Marlin is requesting to install school board for girls softball. The cost for the school board is approximately $5,500 and will be donated by Wilson Bank of Trust. Engineering Construction has reviewed this request and finds the location acceptable. The installation is at no cost to the Board. Recommend motion to approve Blackman Middle request to install a school board for girls softball as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Ms. Sharp, thank you. Questions on school board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Motion carries. Barfield Elementary.
Principal Judy Goodwin is requesting to install three new playground pieces and two trash receptacles at the cost of $23,854.60. This cost will be paid for by the Barfield PTO and will be at no cost to the Board. Engineering Construction has reviewed this request and requests the locations and finds it acceptable. Recommend motion to approve the request for additional playground equipment installation at Barfield Elementary as presented.
Motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Motion carries. I don't know what your matters.
Stewart Creek High School Band Booster Club Raffle, 2019. Stewart Creek High School Band Booster Club requests school board permission to apply to the Tennessee Secretary of State for permission to conduct a lottery in the fall of 2019. If approved, raffle tickets will be sold at the price of $20 with a discounted pricing tiers. The prize amount will be either for the fair market value of the new vehicle or 50% of gross ticket sales if less than 45% of the ticket inventory is sold. The drawing will be held at Stewart's Creek High School in the fall of 2019. All purchased raffle tickets will be placed in an enclosed container and tumbled to assure their mix. The winning ticket will be drawn by an impartial party over the age of eighteen. The winner need not be present for the drawing to win. The 2018 raffle generated a profit of $8,668.68 on ticket sales of $19,056. Logs are maintained detailing the following: the ticket number and purchase, the number of purchase, name, address, phone number, and email address of the purchaser, form of payment, whether it be cash, check, or card. All applicable state and federal requirements or applicable laws are followed. Recommend motion to approve the Stewart's Creek High School Band Booster Club request to apply to the Tennessee Secretary of State for permission to conduct a lottery in the fall of 2019 and to approve this fundraiser contingent on state approval.
Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Young, second.
Second.
Ms. Hodge, thank you. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Motion carries. Okay, Oakland High School.
Oakland High School Football Field Athletic Surfaces Plus fundraising agreement. Oakland High School wants to pursue replacing its grass football field with turf. This project will be funded through the Oakland Endzone Club with the same restrictions and requirement as the Board approved for Blackman High turf project. The upfront advertising payments shall be deposited in the school activity fund of funds, excuse me. The Endzone Club and Oakland High School shall only proceed with the project when these upfront advertising payments are at least 20% of the total cost of the project. These funds shall only be used for the down payment on the turf package. The bid proposal for the turf shall be approved by the school board. The field advertising revenues shall flow through the school support group's bank account and shall only be used for principal and interest payments for the turf field. The school support group will have to obtain financing needed for this project, and the school support group shall have total responsibility for paying off the debt. The field advertising revenues shall go into the school's activity fund when the debt is paid off. The school will have all the responsibility for field replacement, maintenance, and repair. At this time, Oakland High School and the Endzone Club are asking Board approval for the fundraising contract with Athletic Surface Plus and the $5,000 initial payment so that fundraising may start. The second agreement with ASP will be brought back to the Board after fundraising is well underway. Oakland High School is not requesting any funds from Rutherford County schools. The school will be soliciting advertising contributions upfront as well as advertising commitments extended over multiple years in conjunction with Athletic Surfaces Plus. The Endzone Club will most likely have to get a loan to cover total costs, which will be fully covered by advanced donations and/or commitments before we can proceed with the project. The outside account will be managed by parents and community supporters and will be supported by the principal of the high school and the Rutherford County Schools Director of Finance. Recommend approval to allow Oakland High School Endzone Club to enter into a fundraising contract with Athletic Surfaces Plus, subject to the six restrictions enumerated above.
Have a motion to approve? Thank you, Ms. Hodge, second.
Second.
Ms. Young, any questions?
I just make a couple of comments. I've been on the floor several years, and anytime that we have organizations out here that want to contribute to the betterment of our schools, I'll definitely be in favor. I will say this, that it took, I don't know how many years, for Oakland Riverdale to even get a stadium out. You know why? Because the general public doesn't want to fund it. The issue we're going to have with turf is the same issue. The general public doesn't want to fund it. So I'm a firm believer that if you got an administration that wants to try to push something like this through, and you got a booster club that's going to go out there and get donations, the hard make a vote against it. I'll say this year, which I go to an awful lot of Oakland games because my wife works there, and I want school there, kids want school there, but you got a real, and I saw it this year, Tote Tracy probably speaks to it, you got a real safety issue is what they run into this year during playoffs, as far as what the weather, conditions, field conditions, and I think you had a real safety issue on there. But I also will, I also say that this field not only serves the football, all freshmen, varsity, JV, it also serves soccer, correct? Boys and girls, I guess you got JV teams on that. If I'm not mistaken, you think they probably have lacrosse. As much wear and tear as they get on these fields, in my opinion, going with the turf, it's going to probably save thirty, forty thousand dollars a year. I think that's what Blackman brought to us, so, you know, I just think it's a good deal and I'm all in favor of it.
Thank you, Ms. Hodge. Anybody else? We have a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Motion carries. All right, propose policy changes.
Okay, propose policy changes, tab five. Can we go to the motion? Okay, recommend motion to approve Policies 1.407, 3.201, 3.206, 4.211, 6.404, and 6.502 as recommended by the Policy Committee on the first reading.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp, have a second.
Second.
Ms. Johnson. Okay, any questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Okay, number fifteen.
Property. Purchase of property on the Christiana Hoover Gap Road. All due diligence is complete on the property at Christiana Hoover Gap Road area. Because of the three school complex and the step system for sewer, we recommend buying 150 acres of the prime piece of the property out of the floodplain. The price has been negotiated at 18,000 per acre. Jeff Reed, school board attorney, is in the process of completing the closing agreement documents. The property is bordered by Sledge Road on North, Plainview Road on the West, and Christiana Hoover Gap Roads on the South. Recommend motion to approve the Board of Education contracting for purchase of approximately 150 acres of H. Global Investment LP property for 18,000 an acre, subject to County Commission funding, and to authorize the chairman to sign the contract as approved by the Board Attorney Jeff Reed as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Motion carries. 231 property.
Purchase the property of Highway 231 North. All due diligence is complete on property of Highway 231 North across Walter Hill School. Because of the two-school complex and the step system for sewer, we recommend buying on 100 acres. The price has been negotiated to 42,500 per acre. Jeff Reed, school board attorney, is in the process of completing the closing agreement documents. This property on the north end of the farm at the corner of Justin Pike and Highway 231 North. Recommend motion to approve Board of Education contracting for the purchase of approximately 100 acres of Andrew J. and Christie R. Matthews property for 42,500 acres, subject to the County Commission funding, and to authorize the chairman to sign a contract as approved by the Board Attorney Jeff Reed as presented.
Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Ms. Hodge. Any questions on this?
I do have some questions on this, actually.
Okay.
First of all, Mr. Clardy, I'm going to have some questions for you. The property is obviously on the more expensive end compared to what we just approved on the other one, and when looking through the valuation process that the appraiser took, I noticed that in the notebook that you gave us, I'm just looking for some clarification here, one of the comps that he used, and I guess for value purposes, lots of questions, but there's some barriers that he crossed in this, and like, for instance, 24, he crossed 24 to pull some of his comps. I'm just wondering if this property isn't overpriced, I guess, is the real question. I know property, it's at a minimum out there, but particularly on comp four, that comp is zoned differently, but was weighted pretty heavily in the assessment on the value here. I'm wondering if you couldn't speak to that for us.
Excuse me, my voice may not hold out because I ended up with crud today some way. I don't know exactly, it's on Jefferson Pike, it fronts that main road. That's the only thing that I can think of. I know that Mr. Sullivan's comps hold up, and his appraisals do, because I've been to court with him twice, and we won both times, so I have confidence in his ability to direct these prices, not... Not also like to say that from Mr. Gill through Mr. Spurlock, we have chased his property for the last fifteen years to try to get it. We finally, after all that time, got to sit down just recently with Mr. Matthews to have the opportunity to buy it. It fits in very well with our three school because we have, what is the school, Wilson out there, it's very close, Walter Hill across the street. If we put a middle and high school in there, it will serve that entire neighborhood around there and it has direct access to two thirty-one. So we have plenty of room on site to stack vehicles while I do a little work on the road there. The traffic report suggests that we do some work on the roads around for safety features and traffic control. So with all of that, I'm confident that we're looking at a decent price. I've been looking at some recently that is sixty-five thousand dollars an acre and I feel like if we don't take the opportunity to get this property now, don't have the opportunity to do it, and the next time we approach, it'll be, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars higher than it is now. So with that said, I have confidence in Mr. Sullivan. Been dealing with him for a long time and a lot of people do, so that's the best answer I can give you.
And I, I can appreciate Mr. Sullivan and the work that's been done. I'm not in any way trying to micromanage. I'm coming in on this as a newly elected board member, so there's a lot of questions. You know, we've got this binder of over five hundred pages that was given to us about forty-eight hours ago, so a lot of information to go through. There's no doubt that there's a shortage of property, there's no doubt we need the property or a piece of property. I just have great concerns about paying that price for that piece of property or any property. You know, as the crow flies, what is it, to the, the Christiana property, maybe eight, ten miles, and yet that came in at eighteen thousand an acre. Obviously, there's some differences there, that's not to go unnoticed, but you're talking about a piece of property that's more than double per acre. I would be remiss to not ask those kind of questions. And I just don't know that, you know, when you put the, the ball in somebody else's court and you're negotiating prices and they're, they're in control of that negotiation, I'm not sure that's the best posture that we need to be having. And again, I don't question anybody's ability to do their job, I just don't know that I could support spending forty-two thousand dollars plus an acre to build a school. I, I'm certain that, I mean, I would love to see if there was another option, if we could renegotiate down that price, but unfortunately, the information that was provided to me does not justify that cost. That, that EAC, which is heavily weighted, which is the zoning on one of the pieces of property, in fact, it's one of the properties, it's a hundred ninety-five acres, we could go over this for quite a bit of time, but I'll be brief. You know, it's a hundred ninety-five acres, we're asking for a hundred of nine hundred and sixty-one acres. I also don't see in the report which part, portion of the land we're going to be acquiring with the purchase. It's not specified, or at least, and it might be in this five hundred plus pages, I just have not been able to find that. So could you clarify that as well for me? Is it a corner lot? Is it frontage? Is it?
It's a corner lot if you'll look up front.
We leaving the appraisal?
Uh, it's about five pages back.
We're on the appraisal document?
Uh, no, up front on the site plan. About five pages back. You can see the piece of property and the hash mark is where it's set out, right in the corner and the site plan shows two entrances on to two thirty-one. Does that make sense to you?
I think so, so it's not the corner, it's, it's farther off of, was that Jefferson Pike?
Uh, it's right on Jefferson Pike and it's on the north, uh, east. It's about center of the property, but it's on the corner of the property where the property turned west. Do you like me to point it out to you?
Am I looking at this map here before the consultant?
This is, yeah, this is Jefferson Pike. This is.
Well, this is two thirty-one, so this would be Jefferson Pike, right?
Yeah.
It's okay, it's dark.
Two thirty-one north, I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm. So we're going to be beyond, this is the school, right? So we're going deeper into the property, not in the corner.
Right.
This is?
Yeah, this is bed, it's a hundred and seventy. And it's all, these are, uh, pretty big.
Right. That's, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Clardy, without revealing anything particularly that about negotiations for the property, the original asking price was, was, was higher than forty-two five, was it not?
It was. It was forty-five and he wasn't going to lower that, he, you know, just said he'd just pull it. So we've been really chasing that for some time and we have paid seventy-five thousand an acre. We paid forty an acre out at Whitworth Buchanan in that area of where those two schools are going. So the market's tough right now. Land is getting tougher to find and the developers, because of the surge in the markets, have bought up everything in the larger tracks, which only means that they're going to be, you know, residences are going to be popping up everywhere. And I'm looking at some property right now that a deal may fall through with a developer and we may be able to get it for west of town, so it's tough out there. Trying to find something big enough for a three school site without caves, without carst area, without the water table being at the ground level.
And what is our, our, our plan to build out on that site isn't for some time though, right? That's, that's several years out.
I would say, I think it's, if you'll look at your building program there, that's the one where we've pushed down, I think it's, what is it, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, are we behind the eighth ball on, on signing a contract with this? Do we have to do that tonight? Is it something that we have to do tonight?
Uh, yes, ma'am. He is, I got a email from him at the beginning of this month and that said that he was ready to pull it if we didn't do something by the end of the month. And we have pushed him off until March till we can get this through. So if we change the date on it, then we're going to end up losing the piece of property.
I getting it through, you're, you're talking about the health and ed and budget county commission?
Health and ed is the end of next month and I think it's around the seventh, we go to budget and finance and then on the fourteenth to full commission.
The, the, the thought on this piece of property is for middle school and a high school. Is that correct?
Yes.
We're all right with the elementary right across the street and Wilson just a mile down the road. But I, you know, I don't know, of course, we look at this plan every year, the five year plan, but we're going to have to do something with the middle school, I would say, because we have absolutely got to relieve Siegel Middle. That's my opinion and, and so I, I got to state it. But sites of this size are getting pretty scarce, aren't they?
They are and the good ones are, I looked at an eighty acre piece not very long ago and they wanted ten million dollars for. It was a good, nice piece of property, but, uh, so it, you know, it depends on who's got it and it depends on what they want for it.
Was this property on the market or did we approach, on both pieces of property? Are we approaching the landowners because that's coveted property or is it on the market?
We approached the owners of them.
Mr. Chairman.
You can get out there and knock doors and people who have been on for generations, they will be very quickly to tell you that, I'm not selling, might as well get in your car and leave. And, you know, I've had that time and time again happen.
I'd just like to comment, I grew up out in this area, I know the land real well and I've talked to Mr. Matthews a few times about selling his property and he never has one to sell property to us. I'm really surprised that he even come to us and offered a, a deal for us to buy property. That's his family farm, it's been in his family for years, large tract of land and we're going to get some prime, piece of property right there, right on two thirty-one corridor, so there's no doubt that the land is worth what he's asking. I mean, I ain't pay that kind of money for land, but today, I don't know if you'll find any cheaper.
It's only going to get worse if the economy holds up. So I guess everyone needs to just brace and get ready for it some way and thinking out of the box.
Now, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just would like to weigh in here and first of all, I want to go on record and thank Ms. Johnson for research and the due diligence that she did on this. Being a new board member, and yes, we've discussed these pieces of property, you know, leading up to and even prior to her taking her seat on the board, but I appreciate the fact that with her, you know, real estate and land knowledge and everything, that she took the time to, to look at this like she did and research it and as Mr. Clardy knows, I've kind of been a thorn in his side about the pricing of this property for a while anyway out of the concern. And I understand that it's prime property and that, and that we got to build those schools out there, but I too have been concerned that we're having to, to pay that much for it. And I, and I understand that we've been chasing it for a while and I think that's probably one of the hardest parts of negotiating for land and things like this because we do have to, to do it in public and so it's a little difficult to have real strong negotiations with people like you would be able to, to do so on a private basis. But I just want to clarify too now that it was my understanding that one of the reasons why we held off until after the first of the year to actually run this through for a vote, a motion and a vote, was because we had been asked to buy the Matthews to wait until after the first of the year. Was my understanding on that not correct?
That's correct. He didn't want it on last year's tax roll.
Right. Okay. So the fact that we're kind of under the gun here, so to speak, is really not because the board has drug at speed on this?
No, not at all. It's just taking the time to put everything together and take a good, hard look at it and see if it's worth forty thousand, forty-two thousand. It takes time to do all the upfront work. And I too have a lot of respect for Ms. Johnson. She's asking all the right questions, she does her homework. As a matter of fact, I told Mr. Spurlock today that she would probably bring the green notebook back and know more about it than I do. And of course, there she is, so.
Thank you.
Done a great job.
Any other questions? All right, we got a motion and a second. On the Matthews property, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Motion carries. Okay, sustain the building plan.
Okay, we discussed this the other night. We were looking at Cannon, Christian Elementary, Barfield, Rock Vale, all totaled, there's fifteen portables and, and at those locations, we agreed, I think we discussed for twenty-twenty-one school year for the bringing forward, for attempt to get funding for elementary school on the south side of this property that was just discussed out in Christiana, that would help eliminate fifteen portals, reduce Buchanan's enrollment, reduce Christiana Elementary's enrollment, Barfield, and also Rock Vale. As far as the capacity is concerned, Buchanan's is sitting at a hundred and twenty-three percent capacity. Christian Elementary is at one hundred and seven percent capacity. Barfield currently is at one hundred and twelve percent capacity and Rock Vale is at a hundred and twenty-two percent capacity. In addition to the middle school, we also included the Rock Springs Elementary addition that we have been approved or, or maybe tentatively approved for the, the, the site plan. Is that correct, Mr. Sandvig, for the Rock Springs Elementary addition? Design, okay. Design money, okay. And then, of course, as we go down there, we, we see the eight forty, ninety-six quarter middle school, that would be a three school complex that we're looking for there. We've got the Laverne Middle Edition, the Roy Waldron Edition, these are all projects for twenty-one, twenty-two. And then the, the, the elementary school, the middle school on the north side, projects for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. We do know we have an issue at Siegel Middle. I mean, we're, we've got five single portals there and four doubles, but we have discussed tentatively and we're in the process of looking at some things that can perhaps, maybe within a year alleviate the, some of the overcrowdiness there. I will call your attention to Oakland Middle, currently somewhere around eleven hundred and eighty-seven students with this addition. This puts our capacity up to fifteen sixty-six of total students, that's a seventy-six percent capacity. And also Whitworth Buchanan, which has eight hundred and twenty-two, where it's built for a thousand and forty-seven, which has no portables obviously, and they're at seventy-nine percent capacity.
Okay, we are voting on the building plan. Do we have a motion to go with our building plan?
I'll make a motion to go along with the building plan as soon as any.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hodge, you got a second?
Second.
Mr. Young? Any other questions, comments? Hey, all those in favor of our building plan, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. All right, Mr. Sandvig, you want to stick by your insurance update?
If y'all don't have any questions from the other night, good.
Okay. Director's update.
I'd like to ask Mr. Lee, I think it was requested the other night, going over the property that we have throughout the system, if you could go over that with the board.
Good evening. Everyone has a packet in front of them, we're also showing it up on the board, I mean, up on the screen. By no means are we here tonight to propose that we're in the land business of wanting to sell land. The question was, do we have property that currently is available that if the question came up, based on? came up, based on the recent acquisitions of the county about possibly putting in a building on one of our sites? Do we have some property that's available? Done a sampling for you. We'll start, just to give you a few examples of what we got, we have everywhere from somewhere around an acre and a half to 90 acres at a couple of sites, but anyway. Also, I also do want to bring to your mind, depending upon when these properties were purchased, some of them are deeded and titled to the Rutherford County Board of Education, and some of them are titled to Rutherford County Commission. So, some of these may get a little muddled as to who actually owns it and that sort of thing, and I'm not a lawyer, I'll leave that to those folks. But anyway, just an example, we had Barfield, which was the first one, had an acre and a half on one corner. Buchanan Elementary, I do want to call your attention to this one, just so you get an example, you see two ball fields at this property, and this is an elementary school, and they don't have a ball team. So, over the years, the community has somewhat, I don't want to call it taking ownership, but they've built a ball field there, and they somewhat maintain it, and the community uses these ball fields for the use of the community, even though it's technically our property. It's kind of been one of those things that's been going on for years, but technically we own it. So, there is potential there.
I asked you a question about that.
Yes, sir.
These have backstops, do they not?
Yes, sir, they do.
They have any dugouts?
Uh, no, sir.
They don't have any dugouts?
No, sir.
But they do have a back?
But they are fenced.
Who put the fence in the backstops, though?
It would be my understanding that was before my time, I've been here 12 years, but I would guess probably the community did. I don't know that the school system did.
Rutherford County Conservation Board did.
I think they did it with a grant, which, I believe so.
Right, so, like I said, some of these pieces, where you see these, there's a lot of history there. This one, this one being like that. Blackman High School, there's a couple of pieces there, there's three acres on a corner, six acres in front of the ball fields. Basically, we're mowing those, I don't know that, you know, there would be any interest for it necessarily that, for it to be sold, but that is. Across the street, we've got Blackman Middle, we've got four acres there. The next piece was Blackman Elementary, we looked at this piece last time, plus or minus four acres there. The piece, the property that's in the back there, that is ours. I would recommend holding that in case we ever needed to put an addition on, that was where the addition would possibly go, that we've looked at in the past, so I wouldn't recommend the acres in the back, that we would be interested in maybe releasing it.
Was that not the floodplain?
Uh, there's a little bit of it that is, but not all of it, no, ma'am. That's where we looked at when we were talking with the county about them possibly putting a DMV station there that we would, that is the low part, and that would be an area where we would put a detention pond for our stormwater runoff. Rock Springs Elementary, we have 23 acres there. A lot of that is, goes back to an apartment complex and into an industrial area. The elevation there is a pretty good rise, but we do have 23 acres there. We'll skip over, not that I'm skipping, but just so we don't belabor it, go to Kitchell Elementary, just to give you an example. What we have there, we have 88 acres there. Don't know that there's anybody that's looking for 88 acres right now, but that's a sizable tract of land, and I don't, right now, it's, you know, most of it's wooded, so we're not having to maintain it. Some of our larger tracts, we are having to maintain. The next one, Laverne Lake and Laverne Middle, this question came up the other night, the reason I, go ahead.
And I apologize for interrupting you, but question for our director and chairman, just curiosity, you know, 88 acres at Kitchell, is that an area that we have identified or talked about, that we might need another level of school at all at that point? That is a lot of property.
No, I think it's obvious, there's not a lot of growth out there.
Right, yeah. So, probably not, at least at this juncture.
Probably not, anytime soon.
Okay.
And that's what I'm saying, I'm not recommending that we get any, begin to have a wholesale.
No, 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 I understand.
But the question was asked, what size property do we have, and what do we have? So, I'm bringing this to y'all, so you will know, we've got various property at various places, so the question that you came up with, if somebody came along and wanted, needed some property somewhere, where is it, and what kind of, what kind of pieces do we have?
Thank you.
So, this is more, like I said, it's more informational. Laverne Lake, this is the one that we talked about, there's, it's cut up, for lack of a better term. There's 30 acres that's somewhat landlocked, because that road that goes through there is our road, that goes from the middle school to the elementary, that's a campus road that's used by the city, but we own that. There's nine acres, there's a three-acre piece, there's a three-and-a-half acre piece. If you'll look, the two pieces in white, the rectangles between the nine and the three, and between the three and the three-and-a-half, that's the two residences, that was all one track at one time, and when they sold that, they kept that to live on. They basically sold around their house, so they kept the part they wanted to keep to live on, which I'm not saying is right, wrong, or indifferent, but it does, when you buy a piece like that, and I show it, sometimes we have to buy more than what we need to be able to get where we need to be. And that was the case with this piece, we had to kind of buy more than we needed. But anyway, that's just an example, there's some other pieces, there's the piece at Rock Vale, Rock Vale Elementary, which that piece just came available, because up until this past summer, that was our sewer, that was our sewer drip system area. Now that we were able to tie on to the city sewer this past summer, that land is now available. Athletic fields, ball fields, so that, and you go across the street at the Middle and High School, we have 59 acres. It's all, it's all a big, it's hilly and wooded, it's not conducive for ball fields or that kind of thing, but it, there again, it was part of the property that we bought to build the two schools. So, this is just an example, there's 18, there's 18 different school sites there, just to give y'all an example of what we have and where. Be glad to answer any questions.
This is really nice information to have, thank you for pulling this together.
Thank you. And like I said, there's a few other places, if you go to Oakland High School, you'll see a little bit of green space. I didn't show it, because more than likely, it's not large enough, you know, for someone to be potentially interested in. So, I, you know, we do have some green spaces other places, I just didn't show, these are the, most of the ones that I think somebody could potentially down the road may have an interest in.
I know we were approached about Wilson, property out there, maybe someone buying that property, how would we go about putting the value on that property?
We would more than likely hire someone like the gentleman that we were just discussing to put an appraisal value for us, and they would do it on comps based on that area. But that would be, that would be my recommended process, get us an appraisal value on it. The other thing we would have to do with it, because that, I'm sorry, I've gone blank, the road that leads to there, that's our road too, even though everybody uses it as a cut-through, that's our road, but that's not a problem, we could either work out something with an easement, or sell one side, not the other. But yes, it's, it would be, that would be my recommendation.
Have you other questions?
Thank you, sir.
We've got one other, if Mr. Cram would come forward, he's going to tell us a little bit of update on the Navigate app that we're looking.
Thank you, Mr. Spurlock, good evening, everybody. A couple of months ago, back before the school year started, my predecessor, Mr. Kubli, and the SRO safety team looked into an app called Navigate Prepared, which is designed for school safety. And we've arranged with the Navigate Prepared people to have a up-to-two-year trial period with this. This app allows for communication in the event of a situation in a school among teachers and with other persons involved in the school system. And it also has a component which will handle the reconciliation of students being moved or placed in other area. We're finding through this process that the app has got some problems, it's not doing quite what we'd hoped. Some of those problems are, I think we might be able to address with Navigate and see if they could help us improve them. Others concern me that they're out of their control, most notably, the ability to have connectivity with cell phones, both inside and outside our schools. That is something that these teachers and faculty members are running it on their own personal phones, and it's, some of them simply just don't have phone service once they leave the building. So, that is one of our issues that we've got to address. We're finding in reconciliation on, versus using actual paper for rolls and using the app that we're running significantly different on the two, significantly less on the app, particularly in the secondary schools. That's something, I'm going to be meeting with Navigate people next Tuesday morning, and I'm going to be addressing some of those issues. Ideally, theoretically, it's fantastic, it would do exactly what we want, factually, it may not, so we may have to look at other options.
Last thing, update, I'd like to thank the following people for this issue that we had on Wednesday. I would say that, you know, things happen, they happen very quickly and very swiftly. Decisions are made, they're made for the purpose of what's best for our students. Things will occur, there are some things will occur, we learn from it and we get better at it. It's always easy to be an armchair quarterback. We're talking about the safety of children. If I had a crystal ball, and I could have looked in that crystal ball and seen that two hours after we'd called the closing, that it would be sunshiny and everything would be going away, it would have been easy. It's not. With that said, let me make sure everyone understands, I made the call. With the help from Mr. Trey Lee, I appreciate him, he was up at 4:00 in the morning, along with Mr. James Evans, along with Mr. Everett, along with police officers from Smyrna and Laverne, who were giving us information about roads becoming slick on the side roads. When we finished the, this, everything was taken care of, we meet, we identify things that we would, did well, things that we would do over, there wasn't many things that we would have done over. I will say this, I would like to thank the parents, the ones that reached out to me personally, through email and through telephone, not social media, and they had some great feedback, and I thank them for that. I think that that's very beneficial. We don't have these things very often, and thank goodness we don't have these things very often, because I will tell you and tell all the people that are listening out there that we will always err on the side of caution. If I'd known anything that even a probability that it would have occurred, I would have called school off that afternoon. It's not an exact science, we got information from Rutherford County Emergency Management even said this was unforeseen. So, I say all that because we've got some great bus drivers that we should thank, that drive these roads many miles daily with over 25,000 students, and I can't say enough great things how they handled this. I would also like to thank the administrators and the teachers at the schools that worked diligently to make sure that this would go off as easily as possible. I would like to thank Mr. Everett and his staff, who fielded calls, who, you know, who communicated with the bus drivers. You know, there's a lot of things that go in these things. I also would like to think that we were blessed enough not to have any accidents. Now, with that said, we will take everything that we've learned from this, and we will put a plan in place, but it's not a decision that's made without a lot of thought. You know, there's the, it's easy when we know it's coming. You know, I read something about Channel 4 that they were tracking it all night, I'm going to have to call baloney on that, okay? I don't think so. And quite frankly, I think probably, my projections probably are a little more valid than some of our weather forecasts. So, with that all said, I thank our parents for working with us, and I think for all those individuals that are involved in the process. Thank you.
It'd also be nice if we had a weather forecast we could count on.
Evidently, of course, the Nashville stations absolutely blasted us, the school system. Evidently, they've forgotten, just a few short years ago, when they got caught, the same situation later on in the day, and children got off the buses at 10:00 that night. Evidently, Channel 4, 2, and 5 have forgotten all about that. That is miserable and dangerous. Glad I'm not making the decision, I don't know what I would have done.
Okay, Ms. Moore, it looks like you've got us some reading material.
I did, thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah, for the Tennessee Legislative Network update. Of course, as everybody knows, our state legislators and legislature is in full swing, and I have given to you, and actually, this is a report that all of you have received from the TSBA, but I don't know if anybody else here is a little old-school like I am, and when it comes to kind of scrolling through all these pages and pages of documents, I actually do better when I have paper as opposed to trying to do it electronically. I think probably one of the most noteworthy things to report on for this week is the fact that they did, the committees did decide this week on their filing deadline for bills. So, the House and Senate have announced their respective bill filings, deadlines for this year. The House bill filing deadline is going to be February 6, which is next Wednesday, while the Senate deadline is February the 7, next Thursday, and I'll certainly remember that date, because my youngest is turning 18 that day. But anyway, just a little ad lib there, but anyway. The note that they put on here, generally, all legislation must be drafted and signed by sponsors and provided to the clerk, or the legislation cannot be considered. As you'll see from this document that I've given you, there's over 80 bills, I don't remember the exact number, but I know it's over 80, that in some form or fashion relate to education that have been filed. A lot of them, and obviously not going to go through all of them, some of them, you know, are applicable, some of them are rather mundane, but just to, in having some conversation with our legislative rep from the TSBA, Ben Torres, and I was fortunate enough to get to meet with him last Friday and have some conversation with he and the young man that's going to be kind of moving into his position after Randall Bennett retires. So, I got to talk with both of them, and they were really, really helpful, and of course, a lot of the conversation was derived around vouchers and the concerns that we all have for that moving forward in this legislative session. Interestingly enough, this list of bills only contains one that is voucher-related, but I do want to point it out, and I want to talk about it a little bit, because it's one of those that when you look at it at first blush, I'm not sure that a lot of people would be all that concerned, but when you really understand the intent of this bill in terms of vouchers and how it could change the landscape of everything going on, pretty significant, and if you'll turn to page 13 of 18, is the page that it's on, and you'll see it's Senate Bill 338, House Bill 18. The title of the bill is Participation in Individualized Education Account Program. The bill's being sponsored by Senator Gresham and Representative Jay Reedy, who is from Aaron, Tennessee. Of course, everyone knows that, I guess it's been a couple of years ago that the bill was passed, that did allow for vouchers to be available for students with IEPs, Special Education Students. And my understanding is it really hasn't been that widely used, and Mr. Spurlock, I don't know, you might be able to comment on that as far as our numbers locally, I know I've had sped parents that have reached out to me. I know I've had sped parents that have reached out to me and said, you know, what they're offering is ridiculous. And I think the majority of them recognize that the dollars that are being offered through that voucher program, especially for a sped student or a student with an IEP that has special needs and special requirements as far as funding, that those vouchers aren't going to fund what the school system is able to do for those children that we have to, whether it's funded or whether it's an unfunded mandate. But essentially, what this bill does, and you read on the summary, it says it adds students who were previously enrolled in and attended a non-public school or homeschool for the preceding school year to the category of students eligible for their parent to participate in the Individualized Education Account Program. Now, I'm going to speak for myself here and, you know, I would welcome comment or input from the board, but I think this bill is incredibly dangerous. I think it really takes that door that's been cracked for vouchers with the IEP bill and it pretty much slams it open because essentially what this is saying is that that voucher program would now become available if I have a student that I've been homeschooling or if I have a student in a non-public school. So I'm assuming that that would capture, because it doesn't specify private Christian schools or so on and so forth, to be eligible for that voucher money under that same IEP program. So, you know, to me, this is a case of, if you'll pardon the expression, they're putting lipstick on the pig. It still is the pig. It's still a voucher and what it's doing is it's opening the door for homeschool and for private schools to take advantage of those voucher dollars. So it is something, obviously, the TSBA is keeping a close eye on, but I think it's also something that we need to discuss as a board, our approach in terms of working with our legislators and reaching out to them. Again, back to the whole premise of why we believe that vouchers are not best for our school systems, that this applies more than anything else they could have put out there anyway. There is also another bill that the TSBA is watching and very concerned about. It's actually on the second page of what I gave you, it's page three of 18, and it's the top one, Senate Bill 19, House Bill 301, Retention Election of Director of Schools. And this is one I probably need to do a little more research and ask some questions because it really kind of is puzzling to me where this came from or what the motivation behind it was to begin with. But the summary is that it would authorize any county or city governing body to require the director of schools to face a retention election at the next regular August election immediately preceding the expiration of the director of schools' contract, and that it would prohibit the local Board of Education from extending the contract of a director. And I don't know, I know in the past, there's been some bills that have been put forward and people have tried to push for a general election, a public, for the director of schools' positions to become a publicly elected official's position, not an appointed or hired position by the school board. So I think this is another one of those where perhaps they're trying to go at it from a different direction. But again, you know, to me, it wouldn't make sense that you, you know, you're going to do one or the other, you know? If it's not an elected position, I certainly could not support a bill that says that the general public also then gets to make the decision whether or not director's contract is extended or not. So. One other bill I just want to point out, and it's not anything of any concern, but if you look at page seven of 18, it talks about, Senate Bill 180, talks about students serving on local Board of Education. We've had several things, opportunities that have been brought to our attention in the past, whether it was through participating in the Scope Program with the high school students that come and do the work that they do for the mock school board debates and things, that there are some school boards out there that do have like an honorary student or students as members of the local school board. Now, they don't have voting authority. And it is something that I would, again, just like to use this opportunity to kind of put out there for this board to consider. I've seen some school systems that have done this with just some fabulous success and I think it gives some real opportunity to some high school, excelling high school students perhaps, to have an opportunity to participate and give input from the student's perspective. So just wanted to mention that. I believe those were the ones really that were of the biggest concern at this point. Unfortunately, I'm not finding anything in any of these bills that really speak to the thing that we've been asking for and asking for, and that is a total overhaul and reevaluation of the BEP formula. So with that, I will, I know it's been a long evening, I'll stop unless anybody has any questions for me.
I do, and Ms. Johnson may be able to answer this. Even though we have these and they've already been submitted, are they still allowed to submit more bills between now and the deadline? So we could see anything at this point pop up?
Yeah, good point, absolutely. And sometimes I do think, sometimes things get pulled out the closer you get to deadline. Am I right?
That's true. Also, be on the lookout for caption bills. If they are not certain of what they want to file, but they're working on something, they'll potentially pull caption bills as well.
I fully intended to see something on charters as well as vouchers, seeing that our new head of the Department of Education is charter-friendly and ran a charter school as well as her spouse. So that's another thing that we need to be on the lookout.
Absolutely.
I'd like, I think that's more forgiving, passing this out to us tonight. I may have cheated a little bit, and I read through and off a lot of this, but it was clear and honest, man, just lay on your land, man, but I don't want to look at that already. If you just take time to read, which I'm sure everybody will read, a lot of these bills that they're proposing. I think people do a lot of, they do a lot of dreaming. If you just read some of this stuff, where they come up with it, you know, is beyond There's no doubt in my mind, this week, you're going to see something about. I think, I think it's this way every year, we'll probably see something from Mr. Dunn of East Tennessee, proposing something. So with that said, I know we're meeting probably in two weeks, and I know we've sent resolutions down there in years past to all of them. I don't know how the board feels about it, but at least if I send something down to every one of them, get it off my chest, I'm totally against it, I feel a little bit better about it. I don't know how the board feels like yet, but I would, I'd like to see the board go ahead and make plans to have something sent down to each legislature like we did before. I can tell you that Mr. Gresham there, he's behind this stuff, he's pushing this stuff heavy, I can tell you. I'd rest it last year, I don't know how long I spent writing it, never heard a word from it, so I'm going to take time again there. So it's just, I just feel like from our standpoint, we need to continue to push forward on it and where anything comes up or not, at least I know how it feels. I'd rest it on it.
That's a good idea, Mr. Hodge. I know that most of us that have been on the board have communicated to Nashville about what we feel and think, and very seldom we ever hear anything back, but at least somebody down there's got to be reading emails. Hopefully, we went through this pretty big, what, two years ago?
Yes.
Hope we don't have to go through vouchers again, but I'm sure we will.
Mr. Hodge, I appreciate that suggestion because actually, yeah, and I would welcome if any board members certainly need to let us know if they don't agree, but I think this is something that we all feel pretty strongly about and I think doing a resolution to send to our legislators is actually a great idea. And, you know, I know there's been schools of thought in the past that, you know, it falls on deaf ears or it, you know, winds up on somebody's desk face down and never gets looked at, but I do think that it is important, especially given the fact, again, that we're the fourth-largest school district in the state of Tennessee. And it would be terribly unfortunate and short-sighted of our legislators, whether it's at a state or a federal level, not to hear what their local Boards of Education are saying to them, that's why they have us here, that's why they've got the boots on the ground. And I think, and perhaps, I know Mr. Reed very often plays a pivotal role in helping to write those resolutions, I think in this particular case, perhaps we need to even carve out a little bit stronger why this would be such a detriment to school systems like Rutherford County that are very successful and they're doing a good job with the dollars that were given and managing them very well and how it could hurt, you know, again, kind of presenting the numbers themselves as to what harm it does to the school system. So I don't know if we could carve something like that in there. I would also suggest that one of the things we might look at, because again, there is power in numbers and I think we have made some headway in helping our county commissioners also understand why funding vouchers for private schools and charter schools and homeschools with public tax dollars is such a bad idea, that perhaps we could look at seeing if the Murphy's Burda City School System and our county commission as well might be willing to get on board with us in partnering with that resolution. I think it would certainly have a lot more power behind it and although I don't want to speak for them, I feel pretty confident based on our relationship with the city school board that they certainly would be on board in doing a dual resolution. So when you look at the numbers behind both of our school systems, I think it's pretty significant. And I just want to kind of put out there too, especially for folks that are out there watching the tape of these, to understand that neither myself, and I don't believe any of my fellow board members, are at all opposed to school choice, at all. I'll be the first one to recognize that there are parents that, and children for whatever reason, need to find different avenues to educate their children, perhaps other than the public schools. But I would also, you know, venture the opinion that we already have school choice and we have had for a long, long time, and that parents that want to do something different figure out a way to do it. And I also know from conversations that I've had with directors of a couple of our very, very prominent private Christian schools, as well as a number of homeschool parents that I know very well, that their response to vouchers is, we're not going to take them, we're not going to touch them, because they understand that taking federal or state tax dollars is going to come with the same strings attached that we as a public school system are fighting right now with all the federal rules and regulations. So with that, I'll enlist, if anybody has any questions or any other comments?
I'd just, and I like your idea about the commissioners, because this could have a big effect on them if it ever came through. The only reason I want to, would like to see us move forward with something like this is, you know, our next board meeting, week after next, is that right?
We have a budget meeting next week.
Then you would have to have, we have to sign it and then you have to take it and get all the commissioners to sign it. So just coordination effort like that is what my thinking is, that we, you know, if we wait till we have another board meeting to decide on something, we're just going to prolong getting down there.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. Mr. Hodge, and I know, of course, the lobbyists on behalf of the school voucher associations and all these private organizations, that so many people don't realize there's a reason why they're up there lobbying and spending so much money financing campaign accounts for legislators that'll vote in favor of their vouchers is because there is money involved. And that's our taxpayer money that'll be going to pay those lobbyists and those private interest groups. So yeah, thank you for that, Mr. Hodge. And I think if we could get a consensus, and maybe Mr. Reed can speak, I don't know, it's something that we need to have a vote on tonight unless any board member is opposed to the idea that, yeah, we could go ahead and ask him to get something drafted for us and get that rolling right away so where we would actually be ready to present for our next board meeting. Is that what you were suggesting, Mr. Hodge? Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Reed.
One thing that, I'll just say it again and we'll get to the bottom line, this is not for y'all really, but for the general public. If money is taken out of the, from the county commission and from our tax rate and is sent somewhere else in a voucher program, one of two things or both will have to happen. One, they're going to have to raise taxes and replace the money. Or two, we're going to have to cut services. Or both of those things will have to happen. And all of them are bad for our schoolchildren. And some of you on this board have been through that cutting services thing and two or three of us have been through it as teachers or coaches or whatever, and it was, and it was really, really tough, tough time. And the county commission needs to understand, and I think they do understand, that those two items could well happen if any money really is taken from the school board budget.
What's that, Mr. Jordan?
Thank you.
Question, if I may, since, and thank you for that, Mr. Sandlin, can you advise, could we, is it possible that we could come and speak about this to the steering committee without it necessarily? Since we won't, I don't think have a resolution written and totally ready to go by Monday, would it be possible for us to at least perhaps come speak on it, to go ahead and just kind of lay this out, what the plan is, so that it can move forward appropriately from there?
Board, is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sandlin.
Just as a side note, I want to find a state legislator that can explain to me a number of hopefully differences between an individualized education account and a voucher program. I want to know what the difference is, because I strongly suspect to you that there's not any difference, much, but I don't know that, I won't, I'm asking for, to be educated.
Well, if it's an account, somebody's got to put something in.
I would think so, yes.
I think it's just being rebranded.
I think so too.
It sounds a little better, kind of like they rebranded Common Core, but it's still here.
Okay.
And if I may, I was told that if there was a bill that was signed last year, kind of went under the radar, I believe Mr. Gardenshire wrote the bill, that if we start a voucher program at the state level, that the federal government will be happy to come in and help us administer that. So that will take every bit of that out of the local control and be in the hands of the federal government.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sharp. Hey, Ms. Hodge?
I've just got a, I've just got a couple of things. And after I get done, Ms. Sharp, she went to a conference this last, last Thursday or something. St. Louis, I believe, and I told her I'd share some of my time with her, so you're going to get a whole lot more out of her than you are of me. But I've just got a couple of just comments here that, one of them comes from Secretary of Education DeVos, this was the 25th. She's going to propose non-regulatory guidance to support school districts' compliance with the requirement that federal funds supplement, and they do not supplant state and local funds. Basically, what they're wanting to do is reduce administrative burden, I guess with their funds, and promote more effective spending. So I don't know what, as much as they put on, so I don't know how that's going to happen. But she goes on to say here, schools need to spend resource on what's best for students, not what's less likely to come up in an office, which I have to agree with. That's one piece of information I got, more or less propositional for effective spending. The next thing I got, Ms. Bush, and she may want to comment on this because this stuff reeked to me, but this was from the 17th of January, that US Department of Education reeked to me, but this was from the 17th of January, that US Department of Education's going along to initiate to address possible inappropriate use of restraint and seclusion in our schools. And I guess the way that, from the article here, it looks like the Office of Civil Rights is going to get involved in this stuff, so it looks like they've got 12 regional offices, so I don't know exactly how that's going to work, if they're going to get into it. You haven't, you know any more than that, Ms. Bush?
Yes, so they are going to work to address seclusion and restraint with, specifically with our disabled students, and that will result in a report that we probably won't see for another three to four years. I'm glad I could contribute to that.
I have a lot of this stuff, I mean, you read some of this stuff, it goes way above my head, but I'm about to figure it out. I'm going to let Ms. Sharp talk to you about what she did.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. This is the second year I've attended this education policy conference in St. Louis, and it's the 30th year that they've held this conference. We're running long tonight, so I won't take up too much time. If anybody wants to contact me, I've got a lot of notes, because we had a half a day on Thursday, a full day on Friday, and then a half a day on Saturday. So a lot of them, I'm still trying to go over and transcribe myself. But just a note, some of these, and they talk really fast, and so there's a lot here. They are saying that Silicon Valley has taken their children's Chromebooks away, that they've gone back to books and paper. So actually, today, when I was here, did do some research, and I did find two articles on that, even those that were around Google and Yahoo, the, what you think of high-tech companies have taken their electronic devices away from their children. So if anybody wants that, I'm happy to send that out by email. And this is a conference that you're going to hear a lot about, a lot of things. So one of the things was the 5G Wi-Fi that's coming in, and the dangers of them, and there's a lot, there's a lot out on the internet. One of the things that I didn't particularly like is they don't have a wide range like our cell phone towers that we have now, so there's going to be more of them put in a lot of places, and our local government's not going to have a choice where they go and what we do with them. So that was interesting. And one group of teenagers, they were all either freshmen or above, called Spark, S-P-A-R-K. It was Students Protecting All Rights for Kids, and they actually came and spoke, and they're based out of Missouri, and they were very confident, just like our young ladies that were here earlier tonight. So that's just some kind of note. If anybody out there wants, they can contact me on Facebook or email me, and I'll send the information to them. It was very good, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, general discussion by the board. Mr. Young, you got some?
We discussed with the steering committee, maybe I was getting more representation on the insurance committee up there. And I think I misunderstood what Ms. Moore was telling me, so I'm going to let her clarify some things in her conversation with Mr. Stevens, as far as their conversation. I think they're, they are in favor now, of us having a representative added, so I'll let her explain more into that.
Okay, and thank you for that, Mr. Young. I know when we talked about the other night, it was, yeah, it was kind of rushed, and I apologize, I don't think I, I communicated well. Of course, we'd had conversations before in talking with Mr. Sandvig and Dr. Anthony about the school systems' representation on this particular committee, which is the Risk Management and Insurance Committee that makes the decisions, or certainly the recommendations to put forward on behalf of the whole county on all of our insurance programs. And of particular concern to us school board members in taking care of our teachers and all of our employees has been, of course, the health care plan, and more specifically, sometimes the, the cost of it, and the burden of the cost to employees that are not making perhaps as much money as others, and kind of the inequity that's there. So, you know, when we looked at it, I think that committee has 13 or 14 members, and we only have two, yeah, two representatives from central office, which, and it certainly is very appropriate that Mr. Sandvig and Dr. Anthony be those representatives from their perspectives from HR and from finance, but when you consider the fact that the school system is responsible or has, what, 80% of the employees in the county, and the fact that we only have two seats at the table, of a table of 13 or 14, we had discussed in the past that it, it would be appropriate, we felt like, to request more representation in that committee. And so, yeah, I did, Mr. Young and I attended the insurance meeting last week, and afterwards we spoke briefly with a couple of commissioners, who recommended that we reach out to Commissioner Stevens, who is the temporary chair of the steering committee right now. I believe that position was vacated by when Mr. Turner left, right? Mr. Stevens was very open to talking about it. I, I don't think he'd really stopped to think about it, and so, you know, we pointed out to him, you know, our concerns, and that we felt like we should have more of a represent, representation based on the representation that we make for the entire county, for those insurance programs. And he, he wanted to go back and research to find out where the rule had come from as to how that committee was set up to begin with, to make sure it wasn't a state, you know, mandated kind of thing. And I guess as he was working his way through that, he spoke with some other commissioners and perhaps some other individuals who had given a response back that to the effect of, gee, this committee is already big enough as it is, why would we want to add more? And I don't think it necessarily had anything to do with us specifically asking for another seat, just the fact that they were kind of overwhelmed by how big the committee was to begin with. So Commissioner Stevens asked me, he said, well, how many more seats do you want? Oh, it's just kind of a tough question to answer, because what I really wanted to answer, I knew he would not want to hear. So, you know, I told him, I said, well, we obviously would like to have an equitable representation based on the number of employees that we represent, but realizing that that's probably going to be too much to ask for out of the gate, why don't you tell me what you think you can do? And, and again, he came back with the response that there were some that were concerned about adding any more seats at all, but that he felt like it made sense, and that he certainly didn't think there would be a problem with us getting, being granted one more seat on that committee. And so he's asked us, and I believe he's put us on the agenda for that steering committee meeting on Monday, so I think we just need to kind of get a general consensus from the board, if that's the direction that you want us to go. Again, I'd love to see us have more than one additional seat, but I think it would certainly make sense from a perspective of now we would have our two point people from central office that manage those programs and those finances, a representative from the board, and then, of course, the REA also has a voting representative on that committee to represent the teachers, which, of course, I would consider that we would be doing as well. Any thoughts or questions?
I'm on my way. There's a ask bar.
So the board's okay if Mr. Young and I attend the steering committee meeting next weekend and, and make that request of them, that they grant us another seat?
That would be fine, for me. But the rest of the board.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Go, partner.
Thank you.
Okay, any more general discussion?
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Unfortunately, Mr. Ghostman left about, who came in and spoke about the honor student. Is there someone here that can speak to that tonight?
Yeah, we've been looking at, the language is there, which says pursuant to state board policy, but there are some things that we're going to have to work through, and I met with him prior to this meeting, and we'll be getting back in touch with him again, we set a time to meet with him again.
Thank you. I, I just didn't want to leave, because he left, and I didn't know that you had spoken with him previously, and we don't want to have unintended consequences and discourage anyone from trying to reach this honor for him, so, thank you.
Any other? Yeah? We would like to thank Ms. Bush, who's been leaving us after this meeting, and going to some far distant away county, which we wish her the best, and thank you for what you've done for us. And if you ever need us, call James Evans.
You will be missed, though, Ms. Bush, and I know you're going to miss us, so.
Thank you. All right, if there's no other business, we are adjourned.